Welcome everyone to our All Church Bible Study on the Book of Titus. This is the second session. The first session is on the church YouTube channel, so you can watch that and catch up if you like. But we're glad you're here. I'm glad you're here. And I'm John Schulte, pastor of Christian Education and Discipleship, taking you through this study of the Book of Titus. Grab your Bibles. And I usually have something to mark things with along with it, or I like to mark right on my Bible. But you can also take notes along with the study if you grab some paper or notebook or something like that and you're good to go. Today, we're going to be covering the verses 5, chapter 1, verse 5 through 16. So lots to cover, lots of good things to get into. And so let's get started. Let's get started. Let's get into it. First of all, last session, we talked about really kind of the focus of the book, and of course, the general background on the book and the island of Crete where this all takes place. And we talked about Paul, we talked a little bit about Titus. You can catch up. I'm not going to go into that now, but you can catch up on that with the first session on YouTube there. But in this session, we're going to be thinking about the qualification for elders. And Paul, in the first section, we talked that Paul was sharing with Timothy, look at, here's the focus. Every church needs to have a evangelistic idea of saying, hey, we need to reach people for Christ and also disciple them into being fully devoted followers of that same Christ. That's the object of all churches, and that needs to be the object of the church in Crete. And so keep that as the focus. But there were a lot of challenges and crazy things going on in Crete. It was a wild town. It was like the Wild West out there during Paul and Titus' time there. But you know, we heard last time Titus was, you know, was a gifted guy, was a young guy. Paul believed in him and certainly wouldn't have put him in this position had he not thought he had the gifts to do it. So we know he can do it, but it's still a major task, and we're going to look at that. And we're going to start with the leadership of what Titus has to kind of gather together. And you know, that I guess would be the best place to start anytime. If you have issues with a church, or you're going to get a church started, or whatever, you got to start with the leadership. And of course, that's where Paul goes. So Paul begins there with his thoughts that he sends to Titus. And so let's start with verse 5. "For this reason, I left you in Crete, that you would set in order what remains, and appoint elders in every city as I directed you." So I underlined, "appoint elders in every city." So it's more really than just one church in Crete. It's bigger than that. He's going to, the island, as we went through, is a good size island. And so there can be, and there were a lot of new, young Christians on the island. And so that has to be thought about, and how are we going to get these different groups throughout the island into these churches? Well, you're going to start with your leadership. So he says, "appoint elders in every city." Titus has got, you know, a pretty big responsibility here to do this. I think it's even greater in some ways than what Timothy had in Ephesus. Timothy had one church. Titus now has to get several churches going. But first, he's got to find the elders to do it. And so Paul says, "As I directed you," I'm going to direct you, verse 6, "namely," this is what I'm directing you to do about looking for leadership. These are the requirements that we need in leadership. He says, "If any man is above reproach, the husband of one wife, having children who believe, not accused of dissipation or rebellion," verse 7, "for the overseer must be above reproach, as God's steward, not self-willed, not quick-tempered, not addicted to wine, not pugnacious, not fond of sore gain." Now let's go back and take a look at that. Wow. Alright, so these are the requirements, but note in them. And that's very similar to the list, almost word for word, written out, the same list that he wrote out to Timothy when he was talking to Timothy about having to get the elders together in Ephesus. But now in Titus, he says, "Look, you got to look for these kinds of guys." Now notice that he brings, there's a theme here. He brings something out again, and I underlined it, "above reproach," he says. And then later again, he says, "above reproach," see, "as I directed you, namely, if any man is above reproach." And then later, "for the overseer," that overseer is elder, that's interchangeable, the New Testament interchanges those with overseer, elder, pastor, bishop, you know, but in the office, this office, you know, this leadership office, alright, must be above reproach. So what does that exactly mean? Are we looking for perfection? Because no one's perfect, right? No, exactly. No one's perfect. So it's not about perfectionism, but it is about a person who's lived a personal life, a life, you know, that isn't scandalous. A person who lived a life that's not part of, and this is the tough part, because the island was full of them at the time of Timothy and Titus, not a part of rebelliousness, empty talkers, deceivers, liars, evil beasts, lazy gluttons, and we're going to get to all that in just a minute. But anyway, you got to find somebody in there who wasn't a part of that kind of thing. Doesn't have to be perfect, but he didn't have to, he's not going to be a part of the problem that we're trying to solve, you know. And so that's what he's really looking for. So that's what he means by above reproach. And then in verse 7, he says, you know, again, "for the overseer, the leadership, the elder, the bishop, the pastor, must be above reproach, as God's steward." So this leadership position is a position of stewardship. And being a steward is someone who manages the resources of another. And as you become a Christian and you grow in your faith, you begin to discover that all that you have is God's, belongs to God. And all that we're doing is managing that. Now, that includes the office of leadership. As a pastor, I am in this office of leadership, and I'm only a steward of that office. One day, it will be returned to the Lord, and hopefully richer, and you know, and deeper, and show that something really occurred there. You know, that's my responsibility to make sure that those things happen as a good steward of the Lord. And all of life is stewardship, right? I mean, you know, when we, when we think about it, we come to realize that our house, or cars, or our jobs, whatever, are given to us to manage for His honor and glory, to manage to help in reaching people for the gospel, the whole point of what Paul said the church is all about, you know. And so those things are not ours just to keep and hold on to and say, oh, I look at what I gained, you know, look at what I've gotten from everything I've done. But look at how the Lord has blessed me so that I can bless others by reaching them for Christ. Look at what the Lord has blessed me so that I might also disciple people to be fully devoted followers of that same Christ. That's the steward we need to be. And that happens even in leadership. When we take a leadership position, we need to manage it as a good steward, someone we realize that in the end, you know, we are just managing this office of elder, office of pastor. And remember, the office of overseer, elder bishop, and so forth, had both ruling, kind of a ruling sense, you know, over everything, but also a preaching and teaching idea. And of course, that has evolved in our faith to be the office of pastor who does preaching and teaching. Obviously Pastor Brian, Pastor Mofeed and I, we preach, we teach, and so forth. And we're almost doing it, well, we're doing it as a profession, I mean, in the sense of full-time work, where others who are elders are still in responsibility over the church, but they're, they don't do it as a full-time job. They have their own life and jobs and so forth. And so, you know, but they still are stewards of what they have. We're stewards of what we have, and we work together to benefit the congregation and the community and so forth. So that's the kind of idea that they have in your mind. He was telling Titus, "You got to find guys that, you know, know about stewardship, who will see this as a good steward, and invest themselves in it so that the return will be great." And that return, of course, is a harvest for the Lord, you know, bringing people to Christ. And so then he says, "Then, you know, you don't want to be self-willed. It's not about you, you know, when I'm in this position, not about me, you know, it's not my will, not what I can get out of it, right? Not quick-tempered, not addicted to wine, and not pugnacious." I underlined that because that's one of my favorite words there. We saw that even in 1 Timothy, "pugnacious." You don't hear that too often out in the world today. But you know what? That's the word for the day. Why don't you, you know, I'll tell you what, try this out. You're in a meeting at work or something, two people are kind of quarreling a little bit, or having a big, heavy discussion, and then just throw out, you know, "Well, don't be pugnacious. See what happens. Email me, you know, on what took place." Because if they say, "What, what do you mean?" Pugnacious means someone who's quick to argue or want to fight, or you know, to always be argumentative. And we don't need leadership like that, you know. So yeah, or you're in a family gathering, throw that word out. Try that word out. Say, "Don't be pugnacious." See what takes place. And if they say to you, "What? What do you mean? What does that mean?" You know, then maybe that's an opening for the gospel, because you can share, "Well, I heard that on my Bible study. I'm doing a Bible study on Titus. We're in chapter 1, verse 7, and Paul is writing this guy Titus, and he says not to be pugnacious." And see what happens. Alright, okay, anyway, that's the word for the day. And you can try it out, and then send me an email on how it worked out for you. And then "not fond of sore gain," you know, apparently there were people, and we're going to run into that in the church, that were just being involved in the church for their own gain, for their own purposes, for popularity, or even for money, anything like that. But not for the gospel, not for what Paul wrote in the very beginning to Titus. He said, "Hey, look at the theme here is in evangelism." And of course, he said, "That happens through the preaching and teaching, preaching of the word and teaching." We're going to get into more of that in just a minute. But anyway, "not fond of sore gain." And then in verse 8, we see, "but hospitable, loving what is good, sensible, just, devout, self-controlled." Those are the things that you can do. Those are the things that should be presentable in how you lead in your life. Be hospitable, be loving what is good, sensible, just, devout, you know, you can do as much as you want of those things. And all of those relate to the fruit of the Spirit, right? Which is also a sign of spiritual maturity. So as you mature in your faith, these things should come about. Your life should be changed. There should be an inner change in you, and me, and us, you know, that produces these things, that we become more hospitable, more loving what is good, more sensible, more just, more devout, I mean, you know, more self-controlled. And if we're not, then there's an issue, isn't there? Then we need to go back with the Lord. Then we haven't been walking close enough with the Lord to produce these things within us. They will naturally occur. The Spirit will begin to change our lives. There is no way else. It's not possible to be in a relationship with Jesus Christ and not be changed by it. It's impossible. That is the work of the Holy Spirit, to continually change our lives to be more like Jesus. And so, and then, you know, of course, now, how does that take place? How does that happen? And so he says, "Okay, so elders, I want you to know, this is, this is what you have to produce in your life. These are the kind of people you have to be. This is how you're going to be a steward of that position." Now, how does that happen? Well, verse 9 tells us, "holding fast the faithful word, which is in accordance with the teaching, so that he will be able both to exhort," the elder will be able to exhort in sound doctrine, "and to refute those who contradict." So again, he goes back to say, how important the preaching of the word and teaching of the word is, "holding fast the faithful word." It's the word of God that changes people, nothing else. Not a motivational speech. It's, you know, it's nothing of us, our own personal intention, you know, all those things in the world you hear today. No, it needs to be inner change. And the only thing that will create an inner change in us is the word. And how do we get that into us? Through good, solid preaching and teaching. That's what we need. And that will create the interchange that changes us to be what we need to be. And the world needs to hear that today, because it's trying to change, but it's not doing it with the realization that it has to be spiritual. That's what Paul meant in 2 Corinthians 5:17, you know. He said, "We're new creatures in Christ. For the old to pass away and the new to come, it has to be an inner change. Otherwise, new will never come. New things will never come unless there's been an inner change." And we need to hear more about that. With all this stuff going on in the world, and in our society, and our communities here with all the protests and everything, I don't hear people speaking about the kind of inner change that we need. We can legislate things. We can do that as much as we want. But until people are changed in the heart, there will be no change. Race relations will happen in a good way when there's a change of heart. And that can only happen through God's word. That's the only place it will happen. That's where people will really be changed, because it is a work of the Holy Spirit. Without it, nothing, nothing will change. Oh, people will say things. Well, we can talk as much as we want. And there were a lot of people doing that already, you know, in Crete. But that talk means nothing. No, you have to hold fast to the faithful word, because that's the power of change, which is in accordance with the teaching, you know, so preaching and teaching, so that the elder will be able to exhort. And I underlined that, because that's a wonderful word, because it's really a word that means challenge, you know, almost confrontative. I mean, it's a heavy challenge, but also with the idea of encouragement, moving something. Not today, where we have people in our society, they're just going around criticizing people, you know, and hurting people intentionally, just for the sake of hurting, because they enjoy doing that. There are many trolls on Facebook. That's all they do. They get a kick out of it. That's, that's not what we're talking about. That's not true exhorting someone, you know. Now, some of you played sports, or maybe coached and so forth, and you know, I have a background in playing basketball, and I remember those days of being out on the court. And I think that coaches really understand this word "exhort" and what Paul meant when he used it, when he was inspired by the Holy Spirit to put that down and say, "This is what you need to be, you need to be able to both exhort in sound doctrine." How do you exhort someone? How do you challenge them, and yet still encourage them? Let me tell you something. There were many times in my life where I think about, you know, we might have been playing flat, or I wasn't doing that well on the court, and boy, the coach would be mad, and he'd call a timeout, and we'd run over to the huddle, and he would confront you and say, you know, "Get your act together. I know you can do better than what you're doing out there. Now, get your head back in the game, and get out there and do something," you know. And, whoa, okay, you know, you'd be like, "Well, alright," and you'd run back out there, and yeah, you got your new focus, you know, on. Or at halftime, you know, our coach would come in there, and boy, he'd be yelling, and he'd be mad. And you knew he wasn't mad at you as a person. He was mad, certainly, if you weren't playing at the potential you needed to be. Why? Because he believed that you could play at a higher potential. He knew it, and he would encourage you, you know, to get that game up, you know. And that is what the word "exhort" means. Paul is saying, "You got to get out there. You got to confront them, and know that they have the potential to do much better than what they're doing. And that's, that's an important job." So exhort them through the word, you know. It's not, it's not a motivational, just a motivational speech, "We're all going to feel good and all that," but nothing really changes. No, you have to exhort them to do more than they ever thought was possible. You exhort them into following the call of the Lord Jesus. And the Holy Spirit moves and motivates and works through that kind of powerful kind of preaching and teaching that changes people's lives and brings about. And that can only happen through sound doctrine, which you find right here in God's word. So good stuff. And then to refute those who contradict, refute, you know, challenge, no. But you got to go, you got to know your game, you know. You got to understand what the, what the truth really is. So you got to be constantly in the word. If you are in leadership in the church, and you need to be in classes to continue to learn and grow and develop, you got to be in a personal Bible study, you know, all of those things, because it helps you then be someone who can discern the truth, and discern what God is calling the church and leading the church to do. And so to be able to be aware of that is right in the word. And when you do that, then you'll be able to refute. Then you'll hear, when it's not sound doctrine, when somebody's bringing up something that they don't need to bring up, or they're doing something that is not, is contradictory to Scripture, you'll know it. And yet, when you walk with the Lord, you'll be able to do it in a way that is also, and all those things he put down here, "hospitable, loving, sensible, just, devout, and self-controlled." Wow, that's powerful. When people can lead like that, you know, they're firm in the word, and yet they do it in such a loving way to move people, you know, to salvation, or to move people back to the truth. And we need that today. We need it desperately. Our communities are looking for that kind of leadership in it. Now, so he says, "That's the task. You and the guys that you gather, Titus, you know, you're going to have to, that's the kind of people you have to pull together, okay? Now, here's the task. I want to lay out what, what the job is for you." This is a mountain, okay, but don't, you know, hang on, because yes, it's a mountain, it's a challenge, but then Paul's going to go into saying how you got to, you got to beat this challenge, how you're going to make it. But we'll get to that in later sessions. Right now, we're just getting the idea of how big a story this is. And so in verse 10, he starts telling about, okay, so now you got to find people like that, because here's what you're going to, here's what you're facing. Verse 10, "For there are many rebellious men, empty talkers and deceivers, especially those of circumcision," that's the Jews, "so there are people who are coming out of a Jewish background that are there, that should know better, but are not, who must be silenced, because they're upsetting whole families, teaching things they should not teach, for the sake of sore gain." So we have people, just like what was happening in Ephesus in 1 Timothy, which we did in our study there. And if you didn't get that study, then you can jump on the church YouTube page and view the videos there, all the sessions, and get that study. Or you can also go on our on-church, our online church platform, which you'll see the directions to on the screen, and get involved in that study too, because that's another rich, fun, and in-depth study that will be helpful for you, and also help you understand kind of what was happening here too, and what, and what Paul was talking to Timothy about. And then verse 12, "One of themselves, a prophet of their own," so they say this about themselves, said, "Cretans are always liars, evil beasts, lazy gluttons," you know. And then in verse 13, Paul says, "This testimony is true." Yep, that's what we ran into when we were on the island together, remember? That's the kind of people we ran into. So this is a, this is a big mountain. You got a challenge on your hands, Titus, and all the guys that are going to be with you. This is tough. "So that they may be," so this testimony is true, "for this reason, reprove them severely," that's that exhortation. Don't, don't mess around. It's too important. Lives depend on this. Eternal life depends on this. Be sharp, be in your game. Have your head in the game, so forth. "so that may be sound in the faith." They have to hear the truth. There are so many, we see here so many other things that are calling us away from the truth, that are acting like it's the truth, that are pretending it's the truth, you know. But we want to have sound faith, the real thing, which can only be found here. And this is the only thing that can really change the heart. 14, "not paying attention to Jewish myths and commandments of men who turn away from the truth," not these guys that are just saying other things, but real truth. And then verse 15, he shifts almost into a kind of a philosophical, you might say, "What, what, all of a sudden, what's going on?" He's, he's very pragmatic here. He's pretty straightforward. He's just laying things out. Then all of a sudden, he comes in with kind of a more, you know, esoteric thought. "To the pure, all things are pure; but to those who are defiled and unbelieving, nothing is pure. But," and I underline this, "both their mind and their conscience are defiled." And that's a discussion, that is a really a, I guess, microcosm of our society that we live in today. Nothing's changed. We're living that same time as what Paul and Titus had in Crete. He's saying that the same thing that they didn't know is time. Everyone was doing what was right in their own eyes. Some people are espousing what is false. They know it's a lie, and yet, they've been saying it so often that they begin to believe that the lie is truth. And they start building their house, you know, their life on that lie that they now say is truth, and they actually believe it to be true. Their conscience has been so numbed that they can't even realize that it's false. And what God had originally designed as a conscience to kind of guide us, and to think about, and to bring us to understanding, "Hey, that might be wrong. You know, we might not be able to do that." Now it's so numb, they can't do that anymore. We live in an age like that. That's why the preaching of the word is so important, because it breaks through that. That's why Paul says, "You know, the word is like a two-edged sword. It cuts down the bone and marrow." We need that. We need to get that down in there, because we've got these layers that we have, that people are building their lives on, that are not truth. And in the end, it's all going to wash away. That's why, that's what Jesus meant in that parable. He said, "Hey, there was a guy that built his house on sand, and after the rains came, it got washed away." And that's what's going to happen if we don't. And so we need to get right into it, into it. And so, yeah, this is so significant. And it's so relevant to our own time that we see this happen. And then in verse 16, he finally, he concludes on his perception of what's happening there in Crete, you know, with the people, the task that the elders have to do. He says, "They profess, the people, okay, profess to know God, but by their deeds they deny Him." You can, you can fake it for a while. We can, you can pretend that, you know, you're going to live this life. But, but you know, after a while, and going through some trials and tribulations, or different things, the truth really comes out, whether you are or not, whether you're just faking it or not. And faking it isn't going to do it. It has to be a change of heart. And the only person who can do that is the person of the Holy Spirit, you know, is the work of the Holy Spirit going in there and changing, "So that now, oh, the old passes away, but the new has come." "They profess to know God, but by their deeds they deny Him, being detestable and disobedient and worthless for any good deed. They're not possible." Now you go, "Wow, that's a mountain." And I have a feeling that Titus and the elders were standing there, looking at this huge mountain, and just, you know, just like we are right now, going, "Whoa, wow. I mean, it just sounds hopeless," you know. But don't worry, we're not done. There's more to go in this wonderful book. And Paul And Paul then goes into saying, you know, what can be done and what is possible, you know. It has to be done through the word. It has to be done by the Spirit. But "all things in Christ." I can do all things in Christ, you know. That's where it comes through because of Christ. And so in the second chapter, which we're going to get into in next session, we start talking about what is a sound church? What is possible? How is that developed? So there's good news coming, so don't be afraid. We're kind of standing, you know, at this, this big mountain, the foot of this big mountain we're going to have to chip away at, you know, to try to make a change. But don't worry, there's power there. This is the best time. This is the best place to be. We're living in the best age right now because the gospel is so relevant. And the more relevant it is, the more powerful it is. And then the more challenging the time, the more power the gospel is. So we're living in a time that is going to be very powerful and many people are going to come to know the Lord. And we're going to see that happening right here in Crete with chapter two. So if you want, you can read ahead. If you're standing there going, "oh, man, I feel kind of bummed out," you know, then read ahead and read chapter two. And we're going to cover that next time. I think it'll be exciting to see that. I'm so glad you joined me for this study. There's so much stuff here, wonderful things. I'm having a lot of fun. I hope you are too, and I look forward to seeing you next time.